Good evening and welcome to the February 26, 2024 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. Established by state law, the commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents appointed to four-year terms by the city council. The Planning Commission is not a policy-setting body that is the city council. The Planning Commission is a policy implementing body, and we review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance, which can be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews, and below-market-rate housing agreements associated with those projects. We work closely with staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for coordinating enforcement of the zoning ordinance and related policies. Thank you for joining this evening. We encourage your participation, whether you are an applicant or member of the public. There will be an opportunity to speak publicly during general public comment, as well as for each agenda item. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hope Leitner to explain how members of the public can participate.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Doe. Regarding procedures for communicating for those presenting an item on tonight's agenda, we kindly ask that you turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment for any... that you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or a phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform the staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that your commenter speaks after you have finished your comment. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. With that said, I hand it back to you, Chair Doe.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order, and we'll move on to item B, roll call. Commissioner Barnes?
Here.
Commissioner Eric?
Here.
Commissioner Farrick?
Here.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Here.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Here.
I am Chair Doe. I am also present. That makes six of us present, and Commissioner Riggs is absent this evening. For item C, reports and announcements, I'll turn to Ms. Sandmeyer.
Good evening, Chair Doe and commissioners. I have one announcement. There's a goal-setting workshop that the city council will be holding this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and that concludes my reports and announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer? No? All right, then. Item D, public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You're not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Turn it back to you, Mr. Hope Leitner, to open public comment.
Under public comment, each speaker may address the Planning Commission once for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. If you are participating via Zoom, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in, please click star nine on your phone. If you have multiple speakers on the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your comment, and we will make sure each speaker has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. At this time, I can begin public comment period if you'd like, Chair Doe.
Yes, please.
We don't have anybody in the chambers, and I don't see any hands online. We can give it another minute if you'd like. We don't have any hands online, so if you would like, we can close public comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close public comment. Under item E, consent calendar, there are no items, so that brings us to item F1, a use permit for 550 Kenwood Drive that will need to be continued to March 11th. And to do so, we do need a motion. If so, if anyone would like to make a motion to continue the meeting to March 11th, welcome that. Commissioner Farrick?
I would like to move to make the motion to... I'll make the motion to move that item to March 11th.
Thank you. A first from Commissioner Farrick. Would anyone like to second Commissioner Farrick's first?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. If there's no questions or discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to continue that item. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That's six yeses, one absent. That item will be continued to the meeting of March 11th. For item F2, a use permit for 113 Princeton Road, it will also be continued to the meeting of March 11th, 2024. So again, we'll need to make a motion here to... Vice Chair Schindler?
I would move that we take this agenda item and move it to March 11th.
Great, thank you. A first from Vice Chair Schindler. Would anyone like to second Commissioner?
Second.
Great, thank you. And if there's no questions or discussion, we'll go ahead and vote to move item F2 to March 11th as well. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That's six yeses and one absent, and that item is continued to the meeting of March F3, Housing Element Annual Progress Report, the city of Menlo Park. Consider and adopt a resolution recommending the city council accept the 2023 annual progress report regarding the status and implementation of the city's current sixth-cycle general plan housing element, 2023 to 2031. The Housing Element Annual Progress Report is not considered a project under CEQA. And for this item, Mr. Smith, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, thank you, Chair Doe. Good evening, planning commissioners. Do you have a presentation that I will give you briefly? So for over 50 years, the state of California has required local governments to plan for how to meet the housing needs of everyone within the community. And every April 1st, the city submits an annual progress report, which we call an APR for short, to the state, and it lists the housing units that were permitted and housing-related activities performed in the previous calendar year. So for this year, we're looking back to 2023. The APR is based on the progress that's made in implementing goals and policies and programs in the city's general plan housing element and meeting the regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, the unit targets that were set by the state. For 2023, the city was in the first year of the sixth-cycle housing element, which covers the eight-year period from 2023 to 2031. And for a little additional background, the housing element was adopted January 31st, 2023, and then council adopted amendments to the housing element on January 23rd of this year. And we have a... It's currently under review by the state for certification. Additionally, there were some related zoning changes to accommodate the 2,946 units needed to meet the city's RENA, and those changes happened in November and December of 2023. The APR tracks housing developments across different phases, so it tracks from when they receive entitlements and then the issuance of the building permits to begin construction of the buildings. And then finally, it ends with tracking the building permit final, when the units are completed and granted full occupancy. The development lifecycle that tracks from entitlements to occupancy is shown in table A2 of the APR, which I believe is exhibit one of attachment A in the staff report packet. And the state considers the issuance of building permits to be the point at which units are counted towards meeting the city's RENA. So for 2023, there were 65 net new dwelling units that were issued building permits. And for comparison, in 2022, the total was 837 net new units, and the total the year prior to that in 2021 was 96 net new units. So there's a basic graph here, looking at total production during the last housing element cycle from 2015, and then carrying through to the previous year, 2023. And you can see that last year's production, although much lower than 2022, is not really inconsistent with previous trends. The city has tended to have multiple years of lower development numbers with some spikes where larger numbers of units were granted building permits. That could be for a number of different reasons. One potential explanation that might explain those trends are, if you look at the 2015 numbers, when we had almost 800 or a little over 800 units permitted that year, you can think back a couple of years before that. In 2012, the downtown specific plan was approved, and there were some additional zoning changes that were approved with the adoption of the housing element in 2013 and 2014. And so then you see a bit of a spike there, once the new zoning was in place. And then, again, in 2016, the Connect Menlo update occurred to the general plan, and some zoning changes occurred in the Bayfront area associated with that. And so when that new zoning went into effect, you can see there was a little bit of a lull, and then development trends started to pick up again. And in 2022, we saw quite a number of developments coming to fruition from those zoning changes related back to Connect Menlo. And so for this lower trend here, obviously, we just went through the housing element cycle. We just adopted a series of zoning changes, so it's entirely possible that the development community was perhaps waiting to see what kind of changes would be ultimately approved, and then, before jumping into a project, waiting to establish what they could do on their properties. Also, as most of you are aware, there's some recent economic trends, such as higher interest rates, that could potentially be delaying development at this time or making the financing of some of the larger projects a little bit more challenging. And as the economic trends hopefully change, or as the community, building community adjusts to different trends in the coming years, that might also be a reason to see a pickup in those numbers again. So out of those 65 units that were produced last year, meaning issued building permits, 63 of those were accessory dwelling units. ADU production continues to grow pretty rapidly. So in 2020, we had 13 ADUs that received building permits, and then that jumped to 36 in 2021, and then to 56 in 2022, and now we're at another record year with 63 in 2023. And that likely stems from changes to state law over the years that have streamlined the ADU permitting process and made it much easier to develop ADUs. And as, I think, as probably neighbors see other neighbors developing these, and the word catches on that this is a possibility, that trend has just continued to grow in the city. In terms of potential future production, looking ahead, there were about 1,900 units that were entitled in 2022, meaning that they got a use permit or architectural control, something like that, from the Planning Commission or the city council. And there's a number of fairly large projects that remain in the pipeline that have not yet been issued building permits. And so just a couple of those big ones would be Willow Village with 1,730 units, and then the Menlo Flats project that has 158 units. And so in future years, you can anticipate that those units will probably begin to show up in the pipeline and affect, bolster the numbers that we will be seeing. The other aspect of the APR, aside from production, is tracking the implementation of programs in the housing element. And so this is in table D of the APR. There were 10 programs that were fully or partially implemented with the adoption of the zoning amendments in November and December of last year. And so, as many of you will recall, that includes modifications to make many non-residential-only zoning districts into mixed-use districts that could support new housing. It included changes to the specific plan area to increase densities, heights, and other development standards. There were increases in density and building coverage for our three lots around downtown and other similar changes to that. So a lot of potential opportunities for new housing units through increased density and some stream linings, some modifications to make development easier throughout the The other thing that I would note is that there are some housing rehabilitation programs underway. And so Program H2C of the housing element is related to those. There was a $180,000 grant to rebuilding Together Peninsula, and as a result of that, so far, three residences in Bellhaven have been rehabbed so far for low-income households. And then marketing and outreach has also taken place in 2023 for the Habitat for Humanity Home Ownership Preservation Program, and that is seeking to provide assistance to 20 households in Bellhaven, and that the funds for that will actually begin to flow this year. So there's some great trends underway there. And then there was also some BMR housing fund support for three projects, and that's related to Program H1H in the housing element. And that would include support for the new BMR ownership development at the low-income level, and that's related to the 123 Independence Drive project being spearheaded by Habitat for Humanity. There's new BMR rental construction for veterans at the extremely low and very low-income levels. MidPen is taking on that project at the Veterans Affairs Campus. And then there's also been funding for home rehabilitation for low-income households in Bellhaven. So those are just a few of the examples of major program implementation from 2023. And you'll recall that 2023 was definitely, even though it was the first year of the housing element cycle, we were still doing a lot of work to try to get the housing element certified and then getting the zoning in place so that we could start to see future production in the remaining years of the cycle. So that was a major undertaking that staff took on. So finally, staff is recommending adoption of a resolution recommending the city council accept the 2023 Housing Element APR. As the staff report notes, the APR is a document, it's looking back and reporting on the previous year's housing production and implementation. So the purpose of this meeting is to report on last year's progress for the awareness of the commission, for the city council, and for the public, and there are no other actions required as part of review of the APR. Following council acceptance of the APR, staff would submit the document before the state-mandated deadline of April 1st. And then, looking ahead in terms of implementation of the housing element programs, we've certainly heard in previous meetings related to the housing element that there are a number of programs that we need to be working on, but among the highest priorities would be an anti-displacement strategy. That's Program H2E. Some, exploring some modifications to the BMR guidelines, potentially increasing the BMR requirements on projects. That's Program H4B. And then, housing on the downtown city-owned parking lots, we recognize that as a major strategy in order to meet our affordable development requirements for this housing cycle. And so work on that will certainly ramp up as we have the zoning in place now, and that is Program H4G. So that concludes my presentation, and so I'll turn it back to you, Chair Doe, but happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions for Mr. Smith before public comment? Vice Chair Schindler?
Thank you, Chair Doe. I know that this is a process and a set of reporting that is fairly tightly bounded by the state in terms of what each jurisdiction is asked to prepare every year as an annual I couldn't see any difference between this and last year's, but so let me just pose it as a question. Is there any meaningful difference in either the process or the format that the state has required each jurisdiction to go through during this cycle?
In terms of the actual annual progress report document, there have been very minor changes to it, such as noting projects in the table A2, that sort of very large table that lists all of the development applications that are under some form of review or approval. For instance, they added a new column to indicate whether it was ministerially approved or discretionary approval, little things like that. But in general, the format, the statistics, the things that the state is looking at are pretty consistent with how we've really been doing things since, I think, at least
Thank you for clarifying that the format hasn't changed. And just to, is there any procedural in terms of what the state and when the state is requiring us to do anything that seems different, significantly different from prior years?
I don't believe that there's anything too different. I would note that the housing element that we have now, compared to the fifth cycle, has quite a few more programs to track, and so that list is quite a bit longer. And I think it's fair to say that the sixth-cycle approval of the housing element was a much lengthier, more involved process with HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, than in previous cycles. But in terms of what they're asking from us each year, not too much different. I would note that one of the programs is a mid-cycle review, and I believe that's in around 2027. We'll be going back to city council and taking a look at where are we in the midpoint of this process, and are there any significant changes that council would like for us to make in terms of increasing densities, if we're not seeing trends that we anticipated in 2023, in terms of the zoning implementation of programs? Where do we need to speed things up? Where do we need to readjust our focus, our resources, in order to make sure that we are hitting our production goals?
Thank you. I appreciate all that additional detail. Thank you. Commissioner Silverstein?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a few follow-up questions. Thanks for the presentation. Really great information here. Out of curiosity, page four of the APR, or of the staff report, says that Menlo Park has met its prorated lower and above moderate income RHNA for the previous reporting period. Given that, for example, our moderate income progress is only 1% complete, what are those prorated requirements? And is there a table we can see to see what the prorated requirements are between 2023 up through 2031, so we can tell what things would need to look like in the future?
Sure. So I'm going to pull up an additional slide here that I think might help answer that question a little bit. So this is our historic RENA progress, if you will. You can see back through 2015, and then on the right-hand side, I should say, the third column in is 2015, and then it leads up through the years, all the way to 2023. 2023, the numbers are in bold, since it's the start of technically a different cycle from the previous one. But as you can see, I would say, our above-moderate production, which is sort of that fourth row down, is quite a bit lower than a typical year, but actually, our very low and low, and even our moderate production is sort of right around the... you know, it's falling in the middle of what you would see from the previous cycle. So not an astounding year, but also, in terms of those lower-income, moderate-income numbers, not, also not necessarily a bad year, if you will. The way that the state, the state has its own way of determining that prorated formula. They issue actually a document each year that lists all of the city's jurisdictions throughout California that either are or are not in compliance. I don't have the exact details of what formula they use in particular, but we do get that report out, whether or not we are compliant or not. I would say we've not, so far, experienced a year where we have not met our prorated share of the lower-income and above-moderate production. And so I think if you're seeing these numbers that are kind of falling within the range of our historical trends, aside from above-moderate, then it seems like we're on track to continue that.
Great. Sorry, really quickly to follow up. So do we know what the explicit numbers are in terms of our expectations for 2024? And either state-mandated or internally?
I would need to do a little bit more research into that. Off the top of my head, no, I do not have the exact numbers that we would be looking for in terms of, like, what we need to produce in 2024 in order to continue to meet that The state doesn't necessarily share those numbers with us in advance as to, in terms of what we need to have in order to keep track.
Great, thanks. I also had one follow-up question, or additional separate question, just a clarifying question. Out of the 65 units that were permitted last year in 2023, 63 of them, as was noted, were ADUs. Do we have any data or information as to how ADUs impact the overall housing stock for the city? Some of those ADUs might be rented out, but some might be used for visitors or an Airbnb or an au pair. And so is there any information for us to know whether or not, if the vast majority of our additional permits are coming in the form of ADUs, is that significantly or measurably actually impacting housing in the area?
So in terms of Menlo Park-specific numbers, I would say we do not have specific data. We do not have anything in terms of tracking an ADU and verifying the, who it's rented to, what the unit is rented at, what most, I think quite a few Bay Area jurisdictions utilize to determine ADUs and kind of like how to classify them. The Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAG, has produced some, they've relied on a couple of different surveys, and then some of their own analyses to look into ADU affordability. And you might note that in the staff report, I think there's a footnote that explains that, according to that ABAG research, about 30% of units are being, can be considered very low-income, 30% low, 30% moderate, and then 10% above moderate. And I think when they're gathering data that they can, or interviewing homeowners, things like that, what they're finding is that a number of the units are being rented out or actually not being rented out. or are actually not being rented out. They may be a child who has moved back home after college and they're living in this unit. That would otherwise, they would need to find another unit to rent somewhere else. Or it may be an aging parent. It may be a family member who needs a place to rent. And some are being rented. They find that some units are truly being rented out to other unrelated members of the community. But I think generally, the reason for that 30% very low, 30% low and 30% moderate is that it does seem to be pretty common that it's a it's a family member or a relative or a family friend or something like that who needs a lower cost unit. And so that's about the best information that we have to go on at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you for those clarifying questions. If there's no additional clarifying questions, let's go ahead and take public comment for this item. Mr. Hope Legner?
As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand, by pressing the hand icon on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're calling in by phone. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. I don't see any hands and we don't have anybody in the gallery, so we can give it another minute if you'd like.
And how about now?
We do have one hand. Give me just one second. Catherine Dumont, I'm going to turn on your microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the planning commission. We don't require that you give your name or address, but it is helpful. Just a second.
Good evening. Thank you, Catherine Dumont, District Three. And appreciate the the work put in by staff and on the report. I guess I'm confused about the numbers, where the numbers were coming from in terms of the very low income and low income. Even listening to the explanation, I'm still at a loss about if the majority of our building or permits were for ADUs, what the basis of determining, especially if we know that a lot of them are are not even going to hit the rental market, that there's no, it doesn't seem to be any mechanism in place for for tracking that. And as a as a renter here in Menlo Park, I guess I'm, I feel like the best way to really track and see where, what's going on is through a rental registry. So I guess I'm in general, I'm just very concerned about the low production, but in specifically with the ADUs, it's, it seems quite questionable how much it's contributing to our housing, near housing goals and without a mechanism to really track such as a rental registry, I don't understand how we're going to know whether we're really on track or if we're just kind of, you know, throwing numbers up in the air. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Chair Doe, I don't see any other hands and we don't have anybody in the gallery. So if you would like to close public comments, you can.
Yes, let's do that. I think people have had plenty of time, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the dais for discussion questions. And ultimately, our action tonight would be to make a recommendation to the city council to accept this 2023 annual progress report for the housing element. Commissioner Eric?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Doe. First off, I hope someone from staff will correct me if I'm not allowed to do this, but my understanding is that with public comment, we're allowed to provide information. And I think Ms. Dumont's question was a good one. I believe it is answered in the staff report in footnote two, which specifies how HCD allows Bay Area jurisdictions to assign ADUs based on affordability. So I will just put that out there because I thought it was a good question. I myself, I'm not sure about this, whether this methodology is accurate, but it's the methodology. So there you go. On to questions and comments. First, I just wanted to once again compliment staff on all of the work that was done on the various programs last year, including so many of which benefited from the zoning amendments that we adopted throughout the course of the year, but the last time in December. And then I did have a question for staff picking up on Commissioner Silverstein's question about what progress our city needs to demonstrate in order to remain in compliance with SB 35. And my understanding is that at the mid, my understanding, which might be mistaken, is that at the midway point of the eight-year period, if we're not tracking more clearly towards our allocation, that we might fall out of compliance. So I was wondering if staff could address what happens at that, if that's true, and what would happen if we're not in compliance at that point?
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. You're correct in that the state looks at the midpoint of the cycle and that that point is when they determine whether or not we would be subject to SB 35 streamlining, which is essentially a way of really reducing the entitlements process, streamlining discretionary reviews in an effort to get more projects through the pipeline. And so that would come into effect if if we have not, you know, if if we get halfway through the cycle and we haven't met about half of our RENA, then the state would see that as an issue.
And just to clarify that, is it is it the case that we don't know exactly what the number is that we would need to hit at that midway point, but presumably it's around half? Or do we actually have a number?
I would need to do a little bit more research to verify exactly what that number is. I don't have that on hand at the moment, but I would assume that it's around half.
Thank you. And then my other question for now is admittedly a bit subjective, but I would appreciate staff's input on the matter. I gather from the staff report that staff is not overly concerned with the low amount of production during this past year for a number of reasons. I'm hoping Mr. Smith or someone else might comment. When, if we continue to see low production, would you be concerned?
I think that understandably, last year was the year of transition into the new zoning, the new housing element. We would get inquiries here and there from property owners, kind of wondering, when is the zoning going to be finalized? You know, can you give us some idea of what to expect? And I could say anecdotal, anecdotally, the inquiries have picked up some since we have adopted our zoning and we have that in place. And then based on the previous trends in the in the chart that I showed previously, it seems like when zoning is finally settled into place, we start to see units ramp up. So I don't think there's necessarily cause for alarm. Obviously, we want as many units to be produced in a year as we can get, but I think because of that uncertainty and some of the economic uncertainty as well, that that is probably the rationale behind it being a little bit lower production year. And with the right things in place, hopefully, we will see that improve in the next year or two. I think as we get closer to that mid-cycle review, we do want to see units picking up. And if we don't, then obviously, we'll be having some further discussions with the commission, with the city council to to see what we can do to kickstart things.
Thank you very much. Those are all my questions for now.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Eric. I think, I think in the staff presentation, Mr. Smith, seeing that trends, how there's such low peaks and highs over the past years of the fifth cycle was helpful, at least for me to see. And also, in addition to that mid-year, sorry, mid-cycle review, if that, if at that point the city council decided there needed to be some changes in zoning to encourage more housing, as we've seen that that took quite a lot of work from staff to a year to kind of get that work done. So in addition to the, that official mid-cycle review, I mean, I'm assuming, would there also be other check-ins along the way? We wouldn't necessarily want to wait at that point and then have to wait a year to go through this kind of zoning uncertainty and process again.
If you'd like me to address that, yeah, every, every year around this time, you should be hearing from us. And so there shouldn't be any surprises along the way. And I think this is a good point when we do the check-in with planning commission and then housing commission and then the city council on these annual reports. Certainly, if production remains low in the next year or two, then, you know, there could certainly be conversations or recommendations to council. Council may want to consider as part of its goal setting, different ways to address that even ahead of the mid-cycle if if that was their desire.
That makes sense. Vice Chair Schindler?
Thank you, Chair Doe. I will take another opportunity to congratulate staff because I think it's worth noting again that this city is starting in a very strong position coming out of the fifth cycle. First of all, just with delivering in the fifth cycle in in almost all of the categories of housing that we were required to to hit, hit and exceeded in many of them. And I also want to build on that, just reiterate how positive it is that we do have a compliant or just clearing one small administrative hurdle, housing element. So we're in a very good position, especially compared to a number of our peers, even in our county. So thank you to staff and to all of the contributors, staff consultants and and members of the community who contributed to that. Even so, my, my response, sort of try and give my feedback in the two areas, housing production number and the conversations we've been having about that trajectory. And then I do have some comments on progress against the 16, nine-ish programs in the Part D of the report. As it relates to housing, the the production trajectory for 2023. When I look at those numbers and I think about the graph that Mr. Smith showed us, I'm not super concerned, particularly because I've, well, because I saw how, for lack of a better word, lumpy production is and was during the 2015 cycle, where there were many low years, but then two very high spikes. If I, my back of the envelope said that in the fifth cycle, last time through, when we got to the halfway mark, we were only at about 40% of the RENA number. So I'm hoping that the state doesn't call it a hard and fast. When you're halfway done with the time, you got to be halfway done with the RENA. There's some wiggle room here. I think we are probably not unique in having such lumpy housing production. I'm also not super worried, at least at this point here at the beginning of 2024, because of the roughly 2,000 units that we talked about that already were entitled, I think you said that, if I'm remembering correctly, in 2022. So if we got to like midway through 2025 and those didn't start to show up as permits, then I, then I might start to sort of wonder about numbers and start to think creatively. So I think those were my only comments as it related to the numbers. On the, all of the different programs, I think it's fantastic that the vast majority of the programs either are underway, indicated as being underway, or a subset of them even noted as completed, those being a lot of the zoning-related ones and the work that staff did to make that happen and that this commission got involved in as well, of course. I think that lays the foundation for so many of the other things that have happened. I do wish that we could say more of our programs that are focused on the city goal, city goals on equity, which is, I think, all of the ones that start with H five and the city goals that are focused on specialized housing needs. Those were two categories in which I noted there were a number of programs that just hadn't quite kicked off yet. And I'm hoping that moving into 2024 with a pivot of resources and just more attention can be paid to some of those programs and get them up and running. They feel newer. A lot of them, those programs, don't have corresponding parallels, at least as far as I saw them in the fifth element program. So I think it will be harder to get new programs up and running rather than continuations of things that were already in the previous cycle. I think that a couple of the highest priority programs that were noted in the staff report, including affordable housing on city-owned parking lots, H four G, and the anti-displacement, H two E, are also ones I am very excited about and prioritize toward the top of my list, although I know that this is not a priority-setting exercise. I am also very excited about H four C, which is, provides us the opportunity to increase funding for affordable housing and with, by participating in the Nexus study with our other jurisdictions in San Mateo County. I think that's a big opportunity. And I do think that since there's been a bunch of conversation about ADUs tonight, H four F, about thinking about how we handle ADU-related regulations and H two D, the ADU amnesty idea, are ways to build on the success that's already well underway in the city with with expanding stock of and raising awareness and leveraging ADU excitement. I think that's, I think I'll hold it at that then. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, for your comprehensive look at the programs in the APR. Any other comments from commissioners or?
Yeah, I just have quick follow-up comments relating to my clarifying questions. I would love for us to be able to research the ADU impact question. I understand that the state allows us to get full credit for a housing unit if we add an ADU. And that is a very reasonable minimum bar, but I think that from our perspective as a broader community, if we simply added ADUs and nothing else, we would not do as much of a service to the overall city as we need to in terms of increasing housing. So if we can figure out what an ADU means to us, either using data or otherwise, I think that'd be fantastic. The other kind of comment I would, I would love to make is somewhat echoing off of Commissioner Eric's question around, at what point would we be concerned if we didn't see any permits coming up? I would love to see eventually what a framework of leading indicators might look like of of housing permits coming on board. And as much as possible, if we can get ahead of any issues or concerns before the halfway mark, in order to be able to react to that, that would be great. We don't want to be in a reactive position. So to just say that, well, we'll see what happens and if we're behind, then we'll do something about it, doesn't seem as, doesn't seem as if that we're, we're necessarily doing enough to make sure that we actually get ahead of, of what we need to do. And it's part of our, our collective responsibility to make sure that we're meeting these goals. So obviously, 2023 has a plethora of reasons why it was low and that's totally fine. And I'm not saying that's anything that should be concerning. But if 2024 or five or six were, then that would be concerning eventually. And, and to get ahead of that as much as possible would be fantastic. And I don't know what that framework would look like. Either it's conversations or, or kind of pre-proposals or permits. But figuring out what that would be, would be fantastic so that we can kind of have this conversation, not when we're just producing the data to the state, but actually have the conversation ahead of time amongst ourselves before we have to produce the data to the state. That's all. Thank you, Chair.
Well said, Commissioner Silverstein. Any other comments or potentially a motion? I think we've had a lot of good comments here as well as appreciation for the work that staff has done to get us to this point and hope for the future and not, not letting us, you know, wait till the, the midpoint. Commissioner Eric?
Yes. Sorry. I do have, I realize I have one more question. I'm looking at program H4V, local density bonus law ordinance. And the status of the program is that the city has not yet initiated this, but the objective is to facilitate utilization of the state density bonus law, which sounds to me like something that will be quite important in meeting our housing allocation. So I was just wondering through the chair if staff can give any indication as to what that might look like.
So actually, you have found a program that we did address in the zoning modifications that we did implement last year. And so that one I did not catch in the report, but we have implemented that. So.
Oh, I see. So the implementation of that program was the work that we did on
Yes.
Density bonus law. Okay.
Yes, it was combined into the updates that we did last year.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Good catch.
Should any motion include language to add that to the initiative if we're recommending approval of the CPR or does that not matter?
Miss, I'm gonna let Mr. Smith take that question.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, we will go in and, and add that. But I think you could incorporate that just for reference as part of the recommendation to the city council.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Was that an indication of a, of a motion or just?
Sure. I move to, I guess, what is the actual resolution we are? To recommend to city council that they accept the housing element annual progress report with the added note that item H4V has already been completed.
Thank you. A first from Commissioner Silverstein. Would anyone like to?
I'm happy to second.
Thank you. And a second from Commissioner Farrick. And Commissioner Silverstein stated it very well. So unless there's any confusion or ambiguity about what we are voting on, and if there's no additional discussion, I think we can go ahead and, and vote on the motion that we have on the table. Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That's six yeses and one absent. And the motion passes. And again, thank you to staff for all your hard work on housing element-related issues. And that brings us to G informational items. Ms. Sanmeyer.
Yes. Good evening again. So for the March 11th meeting, we just have the two items that were continued tonight. So that's the 113 Princeton Road and 550 Kenwood. Those are two single-family home projects. And then the meeting after that will be March 25th, but we don't have an agenda confirmed yet. So that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanmeyer. Any questions for staff? All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.